Jonathan Briggs, Vice Chairman. This meeting is being interpreted live in Spanish. To listen to the Spanish interpretation, please call five zero eight nine two four five one five five. Once again, the number is five zero eight nine two four five one five five. We invite you to focus on the screen for the Spanish version of this announcement.
Hay una línea telefónica simultánea disponible para las personas que desean escuchar la reunión de la junta en español. Si desea escuchar la reunión en español, llame al cinco cero ocho nueve veinticuatro cincuenta y uno cincuenta y cinco.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lopez. So for anyone unable to join us live, this meeting is being recorded and will be available for later viewing on the PGCPS YouTube channel. Lastly, for recording purposes, the Vice Chairman reminds all board members to ensure that their microphones are turned on when speaking. Ms. Johnson, please call the role.
Ms. Ajikaye?
Present.
Dr. Andiful? Ms. Boozer Struther?
Present.
Mr. Briggs?
Present.
Mrs. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Goines McCants?
Present.
Dr. Moss?
Present.
Mrs. Olivo? Ms. Walker? Mr. Jackson? We have six present, we have four.
Thank you so much. Quorum is present, so we're going to move on to item three point one, adoption of the meeting agenda. So if there is no objection, the October ninth, two thousand twenty-five meeting agenda will be adopted. Okay, there being no objection, the October ninth, two thousand twenty-five meeting agenda is adopted as amended. There are no public commenters for this evening, but of course, we always welcome you to come and share your insights, and we appreciate it deeply. With that being said, we're going to move on to item five point O, presentation, which is our blueprint overview. So the Vice Chairman recognizes interim Superintendent Dr. Sean Joseph for the blueprint overview. Dr. Joseph?
Good evening, and thank you, Vice Chair, members of the Board of Education. It is with great enthusiasm and optimism that I introduce tonight's discussion on the blueprint for Maryland's future. This historic legislation represents a bold promise to our children and families that educational opportunities in Maryland will not be defined by zip code, but a shared commitment to excellence and equity. In Prince George's County Public Schools, the blueprint aligns with our own vision of transforming teaching and learning, ensuring our students not only meet state standards, but are also prepared to thrive in college, career, and life. From expanding access to high-quality early childhood education, to raising standards for college and career readiness, to elevating teacher development and compensation, the blueprint provides us with resources and a framework to accelerate change where it's needed most. While the work ahead is complex, we should view this moment as a generational opportunity. By fully embracing the blueprint, Prince George's County Public Schools can lead the state in demonstrating how thoughtful policy, aligned with local commitment, can eliminate gaps, lift outcomes, and inspire confidence in public education. Together, we can ensure that Prince George's County stands as a model of what the blueprint envisioned, a school system where every child, regardless of background, receives the preparation, support, and opportunity to realize their fullest potential. And at this time, I'll turn it over to our Chief of Accountability, Dr. Doug Strater, who will introduce the team that will be presenting tonight.
So good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity of having the pleasure of sharing a summary of the blueprint to the board. I'm surrounded by experts. After I get through the slide presentation, we will go through a question-answer session of which the experts will be available to address any details that I'm unable to. Immediately to my left is Dr. Kyra Libby. She has been our blueprint coordinator since its conception, so she is here to give me the elbow in case I misspeak or I start rambling on too long. And again, we will introduce the other elements, the other members of the team, elements, members of the team and experts, as the questions are asked following the presentation. So that said, let's go ahead and jump in. All right, so to provide a summary, I'll just go back to basically the last twenty years. So where does funding come from for our public school system? If you go back in time, it was back in nineteen ninety-nine that the Thornton Commission was established to define what the public funding formula would be for our schools. That was adopted in a legislation in two thousand two, and it was referred to as the bridge to excellence at that time. We've been under that model right up till Dr. Kerwin, Britt Kerwin, who was Chancellor of the University System of Maryland, was tapped, to refresh the formulas, take a closer look, and modernize our funding formulas from the time prior. So in two thousand sixteen, he was appointed, again, to lead this effort, and two thousand twenty-one, the Kerwin Commission was finally passed into legislation as the blueprint for Maryland, as we currently refer to it as. So why the blueprint? So the primary purpose of a blueprint is to serve as a detailed technical document that visually communicates the design and specifications of a project. I'm using ChatGPT here, by the way. Blueprints provide a clear roadmap with crucial information on materials, dimensions, locations, components, ensuring that the construction aligns with the academics and the designer's vision and appears and adheres to the safety and regulatory standards. They facilitate precise execution, enable efficient coordination among different teams, and prevent errors by acting as a single authoritative source of truth for the project. So the choice of name for Blueprint for Maryland was very deliberate and applicable. So what is the blueprint for Maryland? There are five pillars that establish the blueprint. The first pillar has a focus on early childhood education. This was new. It establishes the need to increase our pre-kindergarten enrollment. It requires us to expand our seats, requires us to expand our relationships with private providers to meet the needs of our students. It also provides a funding formula for our students of poverty. It allows full funding for those students, partial funding, and a tiered approach basis for the students escalating up out of poverty. So again, that's pillar one. Transition to pillar two. It has a focus on our teaching force. The key piece to this was the requirement of sixty thousand dollar minimum salary starting this year, and it additionally increases the stipends of trying to elevate the workforce, including stipends for our nationally board-certified teachers, incentivizing them to work in our schools that are challenged in our lowest-performing schools. It also elevates the teacher, or it's intended to elevate the teaching profession to have our teachers look for more professional goals of staying within the teaching positions within our districts. Transition to pillar three, college and career readiness. This pillar is the focus on academics. This is the largest of the three pillars, will we say, as far as where our efforts are devoted and to influencing the academic achievement of our students. It defines, as a keynote for this, college and career readiness at the end of grade ten. So it establishes a definition for college and career readiness. It establishes the needs in English Language Arts, math, science, social studies, as well as our CTE pathways to get our students to be identified for college and career readiness by the end of grade ten. And for those students that are not, it requires us to create plans for their success, so they will be identified as college and career-ready by the end of grade twelve. Pillar four, more resources for students for success. This establishes our community school efforts. It also establishes our concentration of poverty grants, and it targets financial supports of all, supports of all kinds for our historically underserved students. And last but not least, my favorite, we have the pillar regarding accountability. So within accountability, this establishes the expert review teams that go into the districts and analyze what it is we do. It establishes the Accountability and Implementation Board. It establishes the role of the Maryland State Department of Education and how they monitor our progress. And last but not least, it also establishes the funding formulas themselves that are required, that we're required to follow when providing the dollars to our schools. So I'm now going to transition. We're going to take a closer look at the successes, where we are currently towards our progress in meeting these pillars, or addressing these pillars, as well as the challenges we face. Starting with pillar one, remember, the emphasis here is on pre-K. So we have roughly four thousand sixty-two public students in our pre-K programs. The lion's share of that are in our Tier One, Tier One of the students that are fully funded to attend our pre-K programs. One of the challenges that we're faced with right now, we have roughly, if you look at how many kindergarten students we have, we have roughly eighty-five hundred kindergarten students. Half of that, we have in our pre-K numbers. So our Tier One students are fully funded, and out of our kindergarten students, roughly sixty-five percent of those kindergarten students are students of poverty. So one would expect that our Tier One, we would have four thousand plus students to be identified in Tier One. So it looks like we're getting ready to saturate our Tier One-level students. So one of the greatest challenges that we're faced with right now is, what do we do with our open seats? We now have to, the only option that we really have is to expand those seats to non-funded students, which will then be a financial cost to the district. So one of the challenges, to meet blueprint, we need to continue to make pre-K available, but now we need to transition to where the cost is going to be absorbed by the district. So that's one of the greatest challenges that we're faced with here, and we need to make decisions accordingly. We also have a challenge regarding the lower piece here, and that's the mixed delivery system. Blueprint is pressing districts to try to establish greater relations with our private providers. The target is actually fifty percent of our students be enrolled in private providers supplying, providing pre-K services to our students. The challenge is getting our private providers interested and working with this model, and there's limitations there. There's reasons, there's certification requirements, there's cost requirements and so forth for our private providers to engage in this level of effort, and the value add is questionable, to say. So it's a challenge for us, and this is a different role that public school system has had to stand up private providers in this arena, so that's an additional challenge we're faced with, pillar one. Transitioning to pillar two, high-quality diverse teachers and education. Again, this is a focus on our teaching force. So when looking at this, we have to establish a career ladder, and we have to implement this career ladder. We currently have five thousand seven hundred nineteen teachers involved in this career ladder. Nationally board certification is a keynote to this. It provides the stipends for those teachers to move into our, again, our lowest-performing schools. We have five percent of our workforce engaged in the national board certification process. So what are the challenges? Lack of funding. The national board certification process has a cost to it, and what Blueprint provides doesn't cover the entire cost for that. Additionally, when defining the career ladders, we run into a challenge that we have, there's not commonality across the districts. Each district is defining their own career ladder, so what happens when you have transition as teachers move from district to district? There's some challenges there. So support for this, looking for funding for our NBC programs and to get our teachers through these programs, as well as looking for consistency in rules that can apply towards establishing the ladders across districts. Transitioning to pillar three, college and career readiness. Again, Blueprint establishes the definitions for college and career-ready, or CCR you might hear it referred to as, by the end of grade ten. Currently, forty-three point seven percent of our students exiting tenth grade are college and career-ready. Now, this definition is evolving. I'm hoping to share at this time next year that percentage to be very, much higher, because, again, the definitions have changed. But currently, under the rules that were established for school year twenty-five, this recent cohort of students, we're at forty-three point seven percent. Blueprint also requires us to establish CCR pathways, and we've, there's been a lot of work done in this area here, and you can see some of the counts included here. Over seven thousand students have been involved in our advanced placement programs, international bike galore programs, seven hundred seventy-eight students in primary year programs, so one thousand nine hundred forty-eight students in our middle-years program, four hundred forty-one in our diploma programs. So just to highlight a few, dual enrollment, we have three thousand two hundred forty-nine students, and last but not least, nine thousand two hundred forty-eight students in our career and technology education programs. All of these are involved in those CCR pathways, and we are hoping to increase the student enrollments in these. So what are the challenges? One of the key challenges we have when we're looking at CCR by the end of grade ten, college and career readiness by the end of grade ten, there's a couple. One, trying to implement this model, trying to track the students and making sure they have everything they need available to them to be able to meet that CCR standard by the end of grade ten. Second challenge we have is, okay, so it has to be identified by the end of grade ten. The time it takes to figure out whether the student is CCR by looking at grade point averages, by looking at test results and so forth, those results aren't available well into the eleventh grade year. So then trying to get those interventions in place for those students for their eleventh and twelfth grade years can be a challenge. So we're working on streamlining those efforts and making that data available more timely. We're also seeing challenges with our multilingual students, who's a significant population of this district, trying to get them to that CCR level by the end of grade ten, again, can be a very challenge by looking at their progression or their learning of the language. Scheduling, I just mentioned, is a challenge from the timing of which we're able to provide the notifications to schools, and then the workload that this is placing on our schools to work with the students to come up with the individual programs that are required, if they are not CCR by the end of grade ten. This is a mammoth effort, and again, we're trying to build upon our existing staff in implementing this model. The last thing I would share is one of the challenges that we're faced with college and career readiness is community awareness and trying to find the value add within our student population of why college and career-ready is important, right? So currently, it's not something you're going to see stamped on a diploma. It has nothing to do with their graduation requirements, per se. It includes measures such as the state assessment in English and mathematics, of which is not required for a graduation piece. So trying to incentivize this and having our community understand the importance of college-ready and how important that is post-high school has been a challenge. So just that kind of communication and working through that is really important to move this effort. Pillar four, more resources for our students. Again, this creates our concentration of poverty grants. We're looking at our community schools through this effort. We currently have a hundred and forty-seven schools that are part of the community school effort. Let me, oops, sorry about that. There we go. Part of the community school effort. One of the greatest challenges here are getting our communities used to or familiar with the supports that are now available to them. So again, there's a lot of, a lot of resources that are being pumped into these schools, and again, a lot of our communities are just now starting to understand what's available to them. Data sharing and measurements with the different vendors and so forth that are available to this. Dr. Joseph has a return on investment priority for us this year of, again, making sure that what resources we make available to the schools, we're making sure they have the impact that we're expecting. So getting all of the data pieces in place for us to be able to conduct those evaluations, that's a massive task. And last but not least, when we're looking at the budgetary supports and the systems and structures that need to be in place for these schools, it's wonderful that we're able to expand these opportunities, but to operationalize it by putting the staff behind it and finding the staff to provide the supports that are needed has been a challenge. And this takes us to pillar five, the accountability pillar. Big focus on this that greatly impacts us is the definition of the minimum school funding. We also hear this referenced as the seventy-five percent rule. What's really different about blueprint compared to prior school modeling for funding formulas is concerned is the fact that dollars follow the students. You're going to hear me say this many times, and I'm going to spend a couple of slides modeling this out for you. But the bottom line is, the state dollars that we receive through Blueprint have to follow the students, and seventy-five percent of the dollars that are shared have to be attributed to the schools. So when modeling this, again, I'm going to share a couple of examples with you here momentarily, but we have a hundred and forty-four schools that met this requirement. Ninety schools were funded at an aggregate level of over ninety percent. Forty-two schools did not meet the seventy-five percent rule. Ten of those were under seventy percent, so adjustments were required. So the reason I'm sharing this is because between what was allocated via our prior funding formula, changes had to be implemented. And as a board, you heard from our charter schools last year, you heard from some of our principals last year on how funding was cut, some schools got more, some schools got less. So we want to spend a little bit of time to, to open that book up a bit, to create some understanding as to the why. So change in funding in school offices, we're going to have to look through our funding through a new lens called Blueprint, and again, changes are going to be afoot because of this. So what are our challenges? Money flows with the students. It's going to cause changes in the way we have to think through our budgets. We have to be more deliberate in ensuring that the funding is following the students and following the programs. So again, a new mindset is needed for this, and real decisions are going to have to be made, especially as budget cuts occur. Through the lens of Blueprint, it becomes much more discreet of what our options truly are. So let's spend a bit more time on this minimum school funding component. So under the minimum school funding allocation, what you're going to see is, all students are provided a base amount, a base funding amount, and we call that the foundation program. So again, the blueprint includes a slew of programs which are identified up here because the idea is, not every student is the same. Some students need more than others, depending on what their background is. So for instance, students that are multilingual learners, additional supports will be needed, additional costs need to be attributed to that student. A student with special needs, again, the student has special needs, might require additional resources, which require additional costs. So each of the programs that you see listed here have additional costs that are attributed to students, and I'll have a breakdown of what some of those costs here momentarily. But to give you an idea, I'm going to mention here in a minute, looking at the foundation program, the foundation program establishes the minimum payment for all students across the state. It's the base funding for all students. Compensatory education, that's, that's to address the needs of poverty. Multilingual learners, goes without saying, students that are learning English, families are speaking of a secondary language, language acquisition. So special education, we're familiar with that. Private providers for pre-kindergarten. I'm, there's a program associated with that under the tiered system I mentioned earlier. Tier One is fully funded, Tier Two is partially funded, provides that funding for those students. Transitional supplemental instructional programs, literacy and mathematics for grade three, you can see this also applies, you'll see the comparability wage index, that's sort of the cost of living to be here in Prince George's County compared to some of the other LEAs. And last but not least, college and career readiness, a stipend for all the students that meet that CCR mark. So these are the programs that are outlined on our blueprint. Let's take a look at those that are most greatly impacting our students in our schools, and let's work through a quick model here of what this looks like. So for the purpose of this model, I've rounded up, tried to help to do the math and simplify things, but I just want to hammer what, what this looks like for our schools. So I've created three generic schools, School A, B, and C up here. All three of them have an enrollment of a hundred students. So one would expect they would be funded the same way. In some models, they would be, under Blueprint, definitely not. What's different? It's the demographic makeup of those students within each of the schools that varies. So you can see in the left, those are the main programs that are impacting our students. So you have the foundation, which is the base funding for all students, compensatory education, which is the poverty piece, multilingual learners, special education, those are the big dollar categories. So the per pupil allocation, look at those values. So it's roughly nine thousand dollars per student, base for all of our students within our district. Compensatory education stipends, eight thousand dollars per student. Multilingual students, nine thousand per student. Special education, ninety-five hundred per student. So what happens if you have a student that is of poverty, that's a multilingual student and special ed? Can you see what that cost of that student would be? So depending on the student's needs, that defines the value of that student, then you roll up the cost of that student and all the other students enrolled in that school, and that gives you the school's funding amount. So School A, you have a hundred students. A hundred times nine thousand per student gives you the nine hundred thousand dollar mark for that category, and you can do the math rolling down. So what's different? You have fifty-four students of poverty, twenty-six multilingual, twelve students of special education. So your overall funding for that school is one point six eight million dollars. School B, this is modeled after one of our more urban schools, you have a hundred students, again, enrolled, so that's nine hundred thousand in base funding, but what's different? You have sixty thousand, I mean, sixty students of poverty, you have fifty multilingual students and eighteen special education students, so that puts you two million dollars in total funding for the school, Blueprint state funding for the school. And C is another school that's modeled here. It's populated with fewer students of need, so take a look at this. You have thirty-seven students of poverty, you have five multilingual students, and seven special education students. The funding for that school is only one point three million. So that seventy-five percent rule, when you multiply the seventy-five percent of those values I just shared, that brings you down to the values in red. Notice how they vary from school to school. So the minimum funding for these three schools are what's identified there in red. So then what happens? If you have schools with greater needs, you have small schools that need to staff teachers accordingly, whatever the case is, our actual funding formula, if our numbers aren't coming out to this, we have to move dollars around to support these schools, but we have to keep in mind that minimum seventy-five percent rule for our schools. So that's what's included here. So what are some of these other variables? Where is that other twenty-five percent attributed to, and what's causing some of these shifts within our schools? One of the issues that we have with Blueprint is the fact that it doesn't account for a lot of these valued services that we have within this district. And what do I mean by that? Blueprint does not account for our transportation, does not account for our academic specialty programs, doesn't account for athletics, doesn't account for our arts and music programs, doesn't account for our world language programs, or our clubs, or extracurriculars, doesn't account for our efforts in reducing class size, or our safe and security efforts in the district. Small schools, it also doesn't account for our technology. So all of this has to come out of that twenty-five percent, plus some other figures that, Lisa, you can definitely drill down into her over. But either way, I'm simplifying things, but this is the challenges that we face. So if we have schools that require transportation from across the district, that ups the value and the cost for that school. So where do the monies come from? They got to come from some other school. We got to, you know, slide monies around to ensure that each of our schools is minimally funded to that seventy-five percent of the allocation which is provided by Blueprint. So this is a fundamental shift in how we have to fund our schools from what we've had to do previously. So again, last year, we were hearing from some of our principals, and we were hearing, I've heard from several of the principals when we've been talking through the funding formula, and part of the realization that they were not aware of, that really struck them, was the idea that the dollars are following the students, so you have to look at who your student populations are. The more students you have with the greater needs, the more dollars that are flowing to your school. So when funding was cut from some of our schools, they were missing that piece of they have to look at their student populations to see what, what has transpired. So that sums up Blueprint in a nutshell, anyway, of looking at the five pillars themselves, as well as the impact on the funding piece. Again, I provided a very high-level summary of this information, but I am accompanied here with the experts, and I can take a deeper dive in any of the questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Dr. Strater and Dr. Joseph. We're now going to move to questions. So board members, do you have any questions? Okay, we're going to start with Board Member Olivo. Okay, Board Member Brown?
Thanks. Thank you so much, Vice Chair. Wonderful presentation. Thank you so much for the information. This was a very hearty presentation that was done, so I thank you so much for kind of explaining it, especially as a new board member and just as a PGCPS parent, trying to understand what exactly is Blueprint, right? And so, of course, money is always the big question mark, right? Recently, the state of Maryland, or the Maryland State Department of Education, saw that there was a large number of chronic absenteeism in the state, and I think it was almost close to ninety million dollars. I know chronic absenteeism looks different and probably is exacerbated in areas where there is high poverty levels in our there is high poverty levels in our district. So, my question is, how does that affect our funding? If you all know that answer, if you don't, that's fine, we probably will find out later. But how are we going to address chronic absenteeism to ensure that we minimize the loss of funding?
So, I can address the first part. Our funding is not defined by chronic absenteeism unless we run into issues of enrollment over the September thirty piece. So, let me share with you very quickly. Our funding is based on our enrollment count as of September thirty. Students are required to have a day of attendance on or before September thirty and have a day attendance at some point thereafter. So, as long as our students are enrolled, actively enrolled through September thirty, they're eligible for funding. So, there is no reconciliation, you know, based on the number of days they were absent or anything of that nature that would actually impact the funding of the students. Now, the second question, I'll defer to one of my colleagues here. Liz, Dr. Faison?
Good afternoon, and thank you for the question. When we talk about chronic absenteeism, we know that it includes students who are, have excused absences as well as those who do not. And so, our main goal is to ensure that our students who are unlawfully or have unexcused receive a plan at the beginning of the school year looking at the previous year data. So, it is a role of our pupil personnel workers primarily, and in some schools, our school counselors are able to join with them and meet with those students according to their data the previous year, and to create those plans over the summer through September thirty so that we're looking at students and wrapping our arms around them and providing strategies for them at the beginning of the school year. The other thing that we normally do is when a student approaches chronic absenteeism, they are referred to our student intervention team. A lot of schools have attendance teams, and they use these teams interchangeably. But if a student, you know, is absent, or if there's an academic or behavioral concern, they are referred to our sit teams so that these teams create a plan around what are we doing and regarding a tiered approach for our students. I would lastly say, students who are unlawfully absent twenty, thirty days, or in the interventions at the school level have failed to work and turn around the student, those students are referred to our inter-agency council. And on that inter-agency council is our Department of Social Services. Clinicians also sit on that agency council and a number of organizations in the county to, again, help develop a plan of intervention for the family. And this year, we have really been involved with our county as of late to meet with all of the county organizations, to learn what are the other resources that are available in our county that we may not be aware of, or that we may not be tapping into for our school system. So, last week, we had a meeting with over thirty county organizations, and we began that work to build a greater relationship with our county, to understand what resources are available. We anticipate another meeting at the, at the end of this month to continue that conversation where we prevent, present our systems data. Our principals were also present to talk about what are some of the root causes for the absenteeism that they see in their schools, and some of the strategies that they have already tried. And for some schools, they've seen those strategies work. So, we look this year to really ensure that students have a warm body in the building, someone owning the work, and then someone doing case management for our students. We know that that's a greater need.
Ms. Faison, I'm going to, I'm going to cut you off simply because I think you're giving such a great answer, and we want to hear more of it.
All right.
But I, I do want to, I, I want to just clarify that for board members, we have the two and a half minutes. I think because we have so few board members today, it's okay to go over, but let's just be, you know, reasonable here. Thank you so much for that. Dr. Moss?
Yeah, I'm going to love on Dr. Faison all the more. This is relevant but not relevant. You spoke of the September thirtieth deadline to ensure student enrollment. I think this was the first year, working with the county executive team, that we were able to make sure students had shots and all those things. That number is down, I think, by what percentage from what we normally have? So, we'll get more money this year? What is that?
I will say our numbers as of today are five hundred and forty-four students who have not had their shots. This time last year, we were over a thousand students who are non-compliant.
Yeah, I think your team deserves a round of applause for that work. I'm going to switch from Dr. Faison just for a moment. I'm going to pre-K for a bit. Dr. White knows where I'm going with this. I've had lots of questions around open seats at schools, and there being boundary issues with young people being able to go to a school, their boundary pre-K site being over-enrolled and them not being able to go. I don't know if they meet the income threshold as your, as you've indicated here, should they not meet that income threshold, we would incur additional costs. But I would believe that there's some variance in the model where there are folks who do meet that neighborhood school is overfilled and not able to go to another pre-K site. I think you all have done some work to address this, but I'm curious if we might need additional policy or just kind of where we are with addressing this concern.
So, Andrea Cersei, my Director of Early Learning, is at the podium. I'm going to let her respond to this question.
Sure. Good afternoon, everyone. So, when it comes to pre-kindergarten enrollment, it first starts at the boundary school. But each of our schools have an identified early childhood center, which is called an ECC, by which every boundary school overflows once they are filled. So, there's always an opportunity for eligible families, if they cannot be enrolled within their boundary schools, to then go to their early childhood center. That model is put in place to support our special education students, needing to provide them with the least restrictive environment. So, that's why we go from boundary school to early childhood center for enrollment for pre-K.
Can I just add one thing to that? Income-eligible, we allow them to enroll first. We have until September nineteenth, and at that point in time, if there are available seats after that, we over, we then enroll over-income families at no charge to them. In every site, we're going to always leave at least two seats open for any special education student that may come through Child Find because we always have to place them if they come.
Do we get the fund? This is my last point of this question. If they go to that early childhood center rather than their boundary school, do we still get that funding?
As long as they're income-eligible, we will receive the funding for those students. So, enrolled by September thirtieth, they're income-eligible, and as Dr. Strater said, there's a little bit of a nuance. So, it's not just income-eligible, but there goes up to tier two partially, which is a three hundred and sixty percent. So, any student falling in there, wherever they are enrolled, whether it's at pre-K boundary, ECC, Montessori, or preschool special ed, that funding is attached to them.
I'll stop them over time. I have one question, but I'll stop.
Okay. Thank you so much to the team and to Dr. Moss. We're going to go to Board Member Olivo.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair Briggs, and I really appreciate this, this whole presentation. I think just looking again at slide number ten and the, the funding formula, and having heard from principals about some schools, you know, losing some funding, other schools have gotten some pretty significant increases in funding. And I wondered if, if whoever is appropriate could share, how are we working with our principals and our community school coordinators to ensure that we're really using this additional funding in a way that, that truly serves the students to meet their needs and also to increase academic achievement in those schools?
Good evening. So, we're working with our schools to align their plans and their goals to align with their budget all around. So, when we look at community schools and how the funding's being used along with their SBB, and if they have Title I, so we're looking at how they align all of their budgets to their school goals within their plans.
Oh, great. That was, okay. So, we're going to move to, I just thought there was more to come. Okay, we're going to go to Board Member Goins McCanns.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I'm going to try and keep this one a little bit brief because my understanding of the Blueprint comes from, obviously, being an educator practitioner and working with people on advocacy for this bill and now this law. Can you explain to us a little bit more how, like when we're looking at your numbers in the appendix, there is no cuts year over year, but how that can still be felt at the school level as a funding cut? Whoever is appropriate.
So, the school budgeting process is complex. Even if, if you look at a school and the positions that they purchase year over year with their dollars allocated to the school, if nothing else changes, you still have the cost of negotiated agreements that goes into effect. And so, you may have a level of funding that's provided to a school, and you may have a level of increase to those positions in that school that are greater than the increase of the funding that comes to that school. So, now their, their spending power is less than it was the year before. So, that certainly can play an impact in this as well. This year was the first year that we actually worked through first phase of the implementation to move our schools from the old methodology under SBB to the Blueprint methodology and looking at that minimum school funding. It comprises of three buckets. The first bucket is the portion that the principals have control over, that's their SBB budget, where they can purchase what they desire. You then have the second bucket, which are locked positions that are centrally managed, but they're still at the school, such as nurses. And then you have the third bucket, which are school costs that are centrally managed, but they're in central office cost centers. So, this was the first year that we took all three components to then see how those buckets equal the total budget and support for that school, and see how that compared to the Blueprint funding coming into that school. Once we did that math, we could then see where they at sixty percent of the MSF, or where they at a hundred and twenty percent of the MSF. So, that's when we then began to have those conversations around, how do you balance that out to get the schools that are at the lower end closer to that midpoint of seventy-five percent? And funding has to come from somewhere. So, it's a resource reallocation exercise.
Okay. Thank you so much. We're going to move to Board Member Boozer Struther.
Yeah, thank you so much, and thank you for the presentation. I have a follow-up question to Dr. Faison for that meeting you had with thirty agencies. Did, were the transportation providers there, was Womata and the bus, and any, any of the organizations focused on our absentee issue because of transportation and infrastructure?
Not at that particular meeting, but that is the first of many. We will be folding in additional partners as they are identified.
That, that's one that I want to elevate for our high schools in particular. And the one thing that I'm beginning to see is the issue of absenteeism and attendance finally taking what we know from the Corwin Commission and applying it to the issue of absenteeism. And, and I really, I want to call out that Maryland State Department of Education, the state board, has issued a new guidance on absenteeism, and they are, and they are calling for an end of shame and blame. And we, we are at odds in this county still on that issue, particularly for our high school students. And I would like to request that we continue to dig in on root causes and pillar four and continue to head in that direction. And also look at this really important issue of transportation and how it has made it very difficult for high school students, some who are late because of it, or they give up. And so, I would like to elevate that as well in this discussion.
Okay. So, we're on the first round. I know there are some board members who have selected for the, for a second time, but is there anyone else that would like to go for this first round? Okay, I would. So, I'm going to just ask a really quick question, have a few questions, and don't feel the need to answer all of those right now. But I'd like to know the number of families in the tier-two category as well as whether we have a tier-three at all. I know that that's based on the measurement to the federal poverty limit level. If so, I'd also like to know how many families in this category are paying the full cost for high-quality, full-day pre-K? According to the Blueprint, tier-two would be available for, at subsidized costs. However, I don't quite understand the specific challenge as it concerns income-eligible families who are over-income. And I'm just trying to understand, shouldn't the school district be receiving some kind of reimbursement from the state for a portion of those covered costs based on the sliding scale of income eligibility when these families enroll? So, I'm just hoping that someone can contextualize that issue, that challenge a bit more. And then, when, when we say in the slides that we need guidance, are we referring to the state agency when we say that? And then the last part to this kind of barrage of questions, so thank you for bearing with me, is can you share more about the specific challenges when attracting effective private partners in schools? Are these organizations having trouble navigating the grant requirements administratively, and thus their barriers that they're facing due to timing, or is it something else entirely? And I'm asking because these are things that I think we can advocate for when we go before elected officials.
She's going to start. You're going to have to repeat like the other ten, she answers the first two.
Okay. I can do it.
First, as it relates to our private providers, the private providers, the work with the private providers is contingent upon them applying for and receiving the Maryland State Department of Education's pre-K expansion grant. So, with the private providers, some of them did have challenges writing the grant and fully responding to the response. So, we partnered with WestEd, and we provided grant-writing support to those providers that were interested. Of that opportunity, we only had three across the county that took advantage of that opportunity to which the three that did participate did indeed receive the grant, which increased our number of private providers. For some, there is cost that, it's a business model. So, am I going to be, is this going to be business profit to me when I can receive fourteen thousand four hundred and seventy-three dollars from the grant, but I could also have a parent that pays fifteen, sixteen thousand? And then you have additional requirements, accreditation, teacher staffing. So, there are a lot of factors that private providers are considering when they want to pay for, apply for that grant. So, then your next question was regard to the sliding scale, and I'm looking over at Chief Howe, but I think I might have it here. So, when it comes to the sliding scale, as a district, we've decided not to implement the sliding scale for this year. When we consider the sliding scale, we also have to factor in that we do have programs like the Montessori program, that is a lottery-based program. So, implementing that sliding scale would need charging for programs that have typically been free. Chief Howe, did you want to add anything else? Okay, great. What other question was there? That was two of the five.
We can get you the numbers of tier-two, tier-three.
I actually brought my computer up here with me. So, for two thousand twenty-four, we had a hundred and thirty-three tier-three students. So, that tier-three is six hundred percent or above the federal poverty guidelines. And when you're considering that tier-three, you're looking at children that are enrolled in pre-K, Montessori, or preschool special ed.
Did you have tier-two?
Tier-two, a hundred and twenty-seven. So, one thing to know about the, the tiers for the Blueprint, we may have children that fall into tier-two. If they are special education and tier-two, we are able to move them to tier-one. We also have the ability to move students who are multilingual learners that are in tier-two and multilingual learners to tier-one. So, there was an additional hundred and sixty-two students that were tier-two that we were able to count under tier-one because they were special education and/or multilingual learners.
Andrea, since you're on a roll, do you have tier-one?
I do. Three thousand eight hundred and two students were submitted for our, our AIB survey for two thousand twenty-four. And again, that was an increase of those hundred and sixty-two that moved from tier-one to tier, from tier-two to tier-one.
Okay, thank you. That was amazing. So, we already knew that you had an amazing team, so thank you so much for that. Okay, we're going to move to the second round, and up first, I have Dr. Moss.
Yeah, I'm sorry for your running on the pre-K here. I'm back at pre-K. And this may be Chief Howe, but I'm curious if we thought about, one, I, I And this may be Chief Howe, but I'm curious if we thought about, one, I, I want to hear what we do to recruit more low-income children into, to these programs. I know there are a number of kids who are at home every day that could be in an early learning program. This has far-reaching consequences for my next priority issue, which is literacy. If we get kids in early childhood centers, we're more likely to have them reading on grade level by third grade. So I'm curious, how aggressive have we been around recruiting, particularly kids who meet the tier-one threshold or the tier-two based on these other indicators that you just laid out? What, what's our recruitment plan for that? How can the board be more supportive? And then this may be for Chief Howe. By making a decision not to use the sliding scale, how is it disproportionately impacting us, you know, down the scale? I hear you're talking about Montessori education. I, I'm going to say something that may not be popular, but there are far less children in Montessori education who are low-income than there are kids who are high-income. And so by not doing that and having that sliding scale where you have kids from other groups, you are also shortchanging kids who be, who might be special education and multilingual learners from engaging in Montessori education. So maybe some unintended consequences in us rejecting the scale. So I'd love to hear about recruitment and to what degree have we audited the unintended consequences of not selecting the, the sliding scale?
Sure, so our recruitment efforts typically begin in the spring. We utilize our county's website as well as the Prince George's County Engage newsletter that goes out to throughout the entire county. Our schools are our greatest resource for getting this information out to their community. So they're using their class dojos, their school websites, and their community resources to get this information to families and bringing them in. I feel like our families are aware that pre-K is here because the lines can be lined up. Our families are lined up on day one. What we're starting to see is just a decline in the births that we have since COVID. So we're at the point where we're having these conversations, are, are there four-year-olds there? There's a decline in our enrollment numbers for kindergarten, which means we're going to see a decline in our enrollment for pre-K. And as you saw, there are additional seats that are available, but the question is really, are there children? Yes, we know culturally, some families do decide, I want to keep my child at home until it's mandatory. But have we reached the point where we've just tapped out of our available four-year-olds because of the birth rate? And Chief Howe, I defer to you on that sliding scale question.
Yeah, well, I think it really has been really sort of a programmatic lead in terms of, do we want to implement the sliding scale? As she mentioned before, there is seat capacity, and there is priority to our tier-one and tier-two students first. But to the extent that those seats are open, now you have an opportunity to allow those students to come in. And we, we have made a decision as a district not to charge for that. So it really has been sort of driven and based off of the programmatic availability of those seats and what it means to be able to get the students in the door earlier in the academic journey as opposed to looking at the cost benefit of possibly, you know, implementing the, the family shared cost associated with pre-K for tier-two and tier-three.
Yeah, I appreciate you all answering the questions. I hope we'll revisit that. I would imagine there are families who live in my district who want to cut down the cost of childcare, and they would take that subsidized portion to be able to enroll them in the system. So I think that we should find some way to look at it if, if, over the next year.
And we can work with communications to really look at it. We still have available seats right now for anyone, any family watching, and you have a child that qualifies. Our ECCs, we have plenty of seats. And so we are open and wanting our families to come, so we'll work with communications.
All right, thank you so much. Board Member Brown?
Thank you so much, Vice Chair. I did have a capital, human capital question because I know special education obviously is a hot topic. So what compensation or incentive options have we been costed to reduce special education and related service vacancies and the clinician hourly compensation gap?
Good evening. I'll answer that. So we are currently not using any of the blueprint funding for recruitment initiatives. We use our own internal operating budget for any incentives that we might need. We've also increased our recruitment efforts to specific universities and colleges that focus on producing related service providers.
Thank you. And the other question that I had when it comes to like compliance questions, are there any operational implications that would result if the MS fund requirement remains applied by program rather than school aggregate?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. That is one of our biggest challenges that all LEAs face. Because currently, the way the legislation is written, we are required to demonstrate 75% or 100%, depending on the program, is following the, the student to the school. But we have to be able to demonstrate that from a budgeting or a resource allocation standpoint so that the money was budgeted that way, but also spent that way by individual program. So I know in the presentation earlier, it was really around where we stand at our MSF percentages in aggregate. That's where we are at this point in time and really looking at, at the aggregate. But trying to get it in a little bit more granular detail by program is a challenge. It's a challenge with our current accounting systems. But when you think about operationalizing that from a, a, a school budgeting standpoint, the principals are focused on the resources coming in the building and deploying the resources in the best way to support the students. They're not thinking, oh, did I spend my comp ed money that came into my school? And so really, what is the benefit of getting that detailed and that granular by individual program? So there has been a lot of push around having that MSF percentage requirement being in the aggregate instead of by individual program.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go to our student member of the board, Ms. Ari.
Okay, thank you so much for sharing this wonderful presentation. My question is around slide 17, specifically about the student health services, more so pertaining to the, like maintaining clinicians being a challenge. Because student health is such a really big priority, I wanted to know what are some budget and also policy changes that might need to be implemented to make sure that we have more mental health services provided for the students in the county?
Thank you for that question. And that slide particularly speaks to the clinicians that are funded both under non-community schools and community school dollars. So what we see right now is a shortfall in the dollars that are provided for both community schools and non-community schools. And so what we would like to do is have the rate increase. We have launched an RFP five years ago. And so the rate that we pay clinicians right now is the same rate that we began five years ago. And so what we see for schools that are non-community schools, we've had to employ a hybrid model for payment. So for our community schools, they work in school seven and a half hours. Community school dollars are paying our providers for that. When ESIR sunset, we had to go to this hybrid model wherein we are paying from the district's fund for four hours for our non-community school so that all of our schools could maintain some type of clinical service in the building. And for those non-community schools, we are leveraging students who have Medicaid as well as those families who have private insurances. And so as you can imagine, this creates a barrier for some families who are not comfortable. So we would ideally request enhancement to provide equitable funds and services for community and non-community schools. Right now, we maintain 11 organizations that contract these services in our schools. And so we have heard that having a more competitive rate would be essential to keeping those clinicians in our building.
All right, that was amazing, Dr. Faison. I mean, you hit the, you hit it. Okay, we're going to go to Board Member Goins McCanns.
Thank you, Vice Chair. My question is a little bit of a follow-up to my question before and then a little bit about the pre-K enrollment conversation that we were just having. Do we have in each of those buildings with the under-filled seats? Do we have a situation where we are allocating teachers to severely under-enrolled pre-K classes? Or is it even though they are under-enrolled, we are still good in terms of the number of teachers per student?
So I'm going to take a stab at this one. Really, we did balancing, and based on balancing these, well, number one, our, our area offices and principals do a great job. Sometimes when they realize from, before school ever starts, that a classroom is not enough to open, they don't even open it. So they may have a teacher, and that teacher's just hanging out until we see if the classroom fills up. Then we get to a place of balancing. And what that means is they look across all of the schools. They look where they can move teachers. This school over here might have an abundance of kids and not enough, and they're able to shift teachers around so that we're not in that situation. The other thing is just so you know, pre-K classrooms cannot go over 20 students.
Ditto. You did well.
And the other half of that question is when we look at the way that our blueprint budget formulas work, and we know that we can have one student that is falling in multiple buckets. How are we working with principals to ensure, kind of in follow-up to Board Member Olivo's question, how are we working to ensure that not only is the money flowing where it's supposed to go, but that we are not having to cut from one area to overstaff in another area that might not necessarily need it within a school building, not on the aggregate?
Yeah, I think that's kind of a shared question with myself and Dr. Murrow. This year was the first year that we did this. So we're kind of in the early phases of going through, going through this implementation. It is a challenge because we do have schools that are not at that threshold where they need to be. And then on paper, you have schools that appear as if they're overfunded, but it could be a myriad of reasons as to why that is. It could be a small school where the foundational funding that they're getting is not enough to cover the basics for that school, so you got to make sure that they have a certain level of funding to cover the basic services for that school. And they could have an MSF percentage of 85%. You can't cut that down to 75 because they don't even have enough to keep the bare minimum. So it, it's a complicated exercise to be able to balance out those different nuances to ensure the schools have what they need. But it's definitely an exercise that, from a resource allocation standpoint, we may lay out the foundation, but we work very closely with the school leadership team in making those decisions.
Okay, are there any other questions for this round two? I think everyone's had a round two except for the student member of the board and Board Member Boozer Struther. If you, okay. I had a question. This was for pillar three. So I wanted to say this is again a kind of a laundry list of things, I apologize, but I wanted to get it all in. I think the law says it aspires to see 100% of students in college and career readiness, to be college and career-ready by the 10th grade. If that's correct, then out of 100%, approximately, it seems like that's the data saying 44% of our students are college and career-ready. And if that's correct in how CCR is measured, what exactly deems a student college and career-ready as far as standards? If you could just unpack that a bit more for 10th grade within the county? And I just wanted to kind of provide some more context in saying that I noticed also with the post-CCR pathways, I was curious to know if they were grounded in evidence or research-based findings. You know, for example, I know that the, you know, advanced placement courses or IB courses are beneficial, and I think that they, of course, there's a lot of research that speaks to the benefit of them. But they seem really college-focused, which isn't a good or bad thing. But still, I want to know, are we offering a mix of resources to students when we think about college enrollment, when we think about first-year GPA, when we think about credits earned in dual enrollment programs or scores in standardized assessments for ACT and SAT? And what I'm really trying to get at here is whether the various enrollment stats in all of these wonderful courses that we're, that we are providing, which are so great, are correlated with improved readiness standards? So for example, some studies have shown that merely enrolling in AP courses without successful, successfully passing the AP exams doesn't necessarily yield significant benefits. So of the approximately 44% of students enrolled in the post-college and career readiness pathway programs, are they yielding a return on investment in terms of some of the ways the research measures CCR? And I also imagine that instructors play a big part in that. I know that every teacher is not the same. So I'm just trying to understand that as we think about, I'm thinking about the, if you can follow me here, I'm thinking about the bigger picture of, and when we think about funding for college and career-ready, and when we think about what programs are the right programs for our district, are we seeing results tied to some of the things that we're investing in? And if not, then should we be thinking that, thinking about that differently? And I would love the off-the-record, just like as a practitioner, I know all of you all are passionate, what is your kind of assessment of, of that?
Woo. I don't have any time. The buzzer went off.
And don't feel, and don't feel pressured to answer right now if you want to send a written statement or something, but I just would like to know.
I'll answer a couple of things, and then I'm going to invite my Director of Career and Technical Education, Pam Smith, to the podium in case she wants to add anything else. So I'll start by saying CCR is a designation provided to us by MSD and the State Board. And so we grapple when Doug, Dr. Schrader, provided the number 43.7%. That was based on the original CCR definition, which is that by the end of grade 10, they have a cumulative unweighted GPA of 3.0 plus Algebra I course of A, B, or C or MCAP Algebra I proficient. So you can, you can hit it by the, one of those three buckets. So right now, we probably have more students than 43.7% because after they, they built in that initial, they then added other ways that we can hit it. So for example, if they have a certain score on SAT, if they have a certain dual enrollment credits in either a math, an English, a science, or a social studies, if they have an AP credit by passing an exam with a certain score in a reading, math, science, or social studies, also if they've passed an IB exam, also if they have an industry-recognized credential. So for our students that are NCTE, if they pass one of their IRCs, that also deems us college and career-ready. What, the number he has provided you now is simply based on MCAP. By November 1st, we will be able to gauge how many more juniors and seniors we currently have that fall into one of those other buckets. I'm trying to think of how to break apart your other question. What, what was the, can you summarize like another simplistic?
Yeah.
Oh, one of the things I remember you saying. Our pathways are not just about college. The purpose of career and technical education is to give a student that exposure because they might get a trade, and they might get a trade and still decide they want to go to college and be an engineer. It's about the possibilities. It's about thinking through and the exposure to, to prompt me. It's about you could go into the military from one of our CTE pathways. And so the pathways and the research again are established by the state. The state just submitted to the Board of Education, the State Board for approval, looking at different pathways. I believe it is not...
There are 14, 14 clusters, I believe 42, 48 pathways.
Yes. And they are, they are variety and range, and we can provide those to you. All of them can lead to multiple avenues for our students, which is what we want.
Okay, okay.
And I would just say, when you mentioned 100% CCR, which is definitely our goal, there is also a, within the law, there are 45% of our graduates by 2031 that need to graduate having earned either an IRC or participated in a registered apprenticeship. So that, there inherently in the, in the law, there is that college and career.
And just to clarify, IRC is industry-recognized credential?
Industry-recognized credential. And those are earned in all of our CTE pathways, and we are also incorporating them in some of our elective courses because our, our CTE pathways will not have enough seats for the number of seniors that we would need when we get, needing that 45%.
So one of the things I'll just add to that is we know that in our school district, every single student takes financial literacy because we are, if not the only, we are one of few. We were the first to have financial literacy as a graduation requirement. And so we're putting an IRC in that course, hoping that every 10th grader that comes out passes that IRC, and we will be at 100%. If that's the case, CCR.
That's great, great. Thank you so much for that. I'm sorry about that. I think we're going to need to vote on if we want, well, if there is no objection to a third round of questions, we just have one board member right now who would like to. So if there is no objection, then we can move to the third round. Okay.
I, I don't want, I don't really, I'm not expecting you all to answer this question today, but it's some... it's something that we need to study a bit. When we decided decades ago to become a specialty school district, the blueprint did not exist. What we saw happen last year with school budgets, schools that had a higher concentration of higher-income students felt like their budgets were cut by the school district. And that was because many of those programs don't have students who represent the demographics that blueprint funds. And that is literally what we're fighting against, and it's a communication war. Now, I'll say this, and we'll probably get in trouble and may not get re-elected for it, but let me say this. At some point, we've got to contend with the over-enrollment of higher-income children in specialty programs so that children across the county can have access to these programs. And I don't know how we begin to deal with that. That seems like a lot of work to do, and I don't know what that looks like. But I do want to say, these schools that were taking cuts and they were finding out that they were losing positions, it's because demographically, they didn't have the demographics to get the additional blueprint funding. And the blueprint was about actually ensuring equitable access to resources. And so, we've got to have that conversation publicly that we just didn't defund this school, or they didn't just lose these positions. It's because they don't have students that the greatest need in their building. So, at some point, we need to publicly have that conversation, hyper-aware of the fact that when we made the decision to be a district of a lot of specialty schools, the blueprint did not exist. But I am adamant about the fact that we consistently over-enroll children who are not from low-income communities in our specialty schools, and that is manifesting in budgets right now. So, I just want to make sure we're hyper-aware of that and we're able to have the appropriate conversations. I was getting emails from schools like, you know, my school got cut. I'm like, well, look at your enrollment. Demographically, you're not going to get additional funding. When you look at your chart with A, B, and C, I mean, that's literally what's playing out. Our specialty schools are doing great work, but I just want to make sure we're honest with the public around what's happening and how demographics are shifting, which means resources are shifting as well.
I'll start, and then I'll let my colleague jump in. I think it's less about, it could be about demographics. I think it's more about locked resources, not about the demographic of the student. Because I lock positions for all of our specialty programs, it looks like a school has an abundance of resources because they're counting that locked against what we give, which then pulls back. Not about, so even if I had demographics there, it would still be different, it would still be over, and we'd still have to pull out. So, it wasn't about the demographics, it's about the locked resources. So, that school looks like, instead of that school being an isolated specialty program on its own sitting, you dump it into a comprehensive school, and now it says the school has too much. But what it doesn't take into account is the 10 extra staff members that are sitting there are locked for a specific purpose, not based on demographics.
Yeah, but that then looks like resources are being shifted. If you have 10 locked positions to run a specialty program, that's 10 positions that are not locked at a school where there's an abundance of children who are in a regular, you know, neighborhood school. So, it is a shifting of resources that is taking place. And so long as the blueprint has these indicators where if you're for concentrate, like, I get questions all the time from affluent schools, why aren't we a community school? Well, you don't have the demographics to be a community school. And they wonder why we don't get the same resources. We can't pass out food boxes at our school and things. So, there are impacts as a result of blueprint that are focused on, that are shifting resources that I don't know that our community truly understands.
Yeah, what I would love to do is, I think, to strengthen the conversation, is to get the data that suggests the students that are, that come through application and lottery, because any child can apply, that I would love to look, because we could be making that statement, and we could have a school, and they are 70 or 80% demographic. So, let's get that data, and then we could sit down, from our perspective, and we could have that conversation.
Sure, I don't know if we want that data yet.
I mean, but at least grounded in the data, because either it's what you're saying is right, or it's a combination.
All right. Okay, we're gonna go to, or Chief Howe, did you want to say anything?
No, she covered it.
Okay.
So, I was just gonna share, looking at the equity process. So, the lotteries are housed through our office and others, but part of the lottery process, family income is not part of that application process. So, I understand the outcome maybe, you know, of what you're sharing, but to Dr. White's point, that's the reason why we have our lotteries, and they're agnostic of family income. So, there's other things that are going on that may contribute to what you're sharing there, but the district goes to great extents to ensure that we do have equity opportunity for these specialty programs for our students.
Okay, I know you all want to, listen, have the pow-wow after, we're gonna go to Board Member Boozer Struthers.
Now that you opened up that topic, oh, man. So, it was my understanding that the Equity Strategic Plan did include that we would be looking at the specialty schools on these equity questions, and I don't know if that work group started. I do know that a work group around the TAG schools did meet, and I look forward to those, that data being presented to the board. But the equity of marketing, I think, is what we're getting at of that when you're three, four, or five years old, your families aren't in PGCPs to receive closer-to-equitable marketing, like we would see with, say, like a school that starts at middle school, like College Park Academy, can go to every single elementary school and market. So, those are real differences in why families do know about those programs. And I think we've known that for decades, as Dr. Moss said. I was going to go back to the CTE opportunities with this, with the State Board, just having said that you can, if you are not at that college and career readiness standard, you can access up to two CTE courses or AP or dual enrollment. But when I look at our high school offerings, besides financial literacy, what else is like a standalone CTE? Or is, or they're really not CTE unless you knew to apply, starting in ninth grade or 10th grade for the full CTE course or pathway?
All of our comprehensive high schools have at least two CTE programs. We do have some CTE centers that have multiple programs where students can transfer in to take advantage of those programs, but every high school has at least two. Most of them have three to four, five different pathways. All of the pathways begin either ninth or 10th, and those in our Crossland, Blingsburg Laurel, where we have our heavy trades or our cosmetology programs, they currently are beginning in the 11th grade. So, in actuality, students have an opportunity to begin their CTE pathway before the end of their 10th grade year.
Right, which is, my concern was that you couldn't even access official CTE after 10th grade. So, you're saying that some programs do now start in 11th grade, so possibly that is a shift that would have to take place at every high school that...
So, the programs that begin in 11th grade, they're very few. There are culinary, cosmetology, barbering, and those programs would, the student, based on the law, the students would need to be CCR in order to access them in, based on blueprint. We currently have those at the various locations here, but the ones that are comprehensive schools that are boundary, those all begin ninth and 10th. And our goal for those programs where we can is to have the IRC, the industry-recognized credential, have the students to be able to take that test by the 10th grade so that they will be able to remain in the pathway and not need interventions so that they will have their CCR designation. Some pathways will not be able to test until the 12th grade because of the nature of the program.
Okay, yeah, I'm just looking at the legislative agenda for the AIB and State Board, and it's including to codify a joint policy for students who do not meet the college and career readiness standard by the end of 10th grade, "initial access," in quotes, "to post-CCR pathways," including the first two courses of a CTE program of study, up to two advanced placement in IB or dual enrollment.
Yes.
And so, but, but it is, right now, not every high school actually could do that, is what you're saying.
Every high school can do that. Every high school has a program that starts either ninth or 10th grade. Even the schools that the programs start in 11th, they have some programs that start ninth and 10th grade as well.
Well, that's, I'm not worried about ninth and 10th grade, I'm worried about that you aren't, you get initial access to post-CCR, meaning 11th and 12th grade.
So, she's saying...
It's expanding it. They're, so basically, they're about to change the blueprint to expand it.
Yeah, so what you're referring to is if they, if they get to 10th grade and they, based on MCAP, and are not qualified, but if we start in ninth or 10th grade, what is, is CTE an option for first and second course of any pathway for an 11th grader who has not been deemed CCR? That's the question. She's saying, AI, they've passed. That goes into probably the flexible models. That's why they've also given us the flexibility to say, it could be AP, it could be dual enrollment, it could be CTE, because the district may have pathways. It's interesting because the state has asked us to push our pathways down and not have them up, so I don't...
Right, so the state, it has asked that, so they are changing the model in '27, '28 of CTE to, from a three- or four-course credit programs to having two courses. So, you would do two courses, ninth and 10th particularly, or 10th and 11th, and then the students will have the ability to do a flex model. So, they would do their Core One, Core Two, and then the flex would be either AP, IB, or AP dual enrollment, continue on in the pathway, or do an apprenticeship, a school enterprise, an internship. So, that would be the flex model. But the first two courses would be ninth or 10th grade, and then the flex would be what they're calling CCL, which is Career Connected Learning. So, that's how the state is presenting CTE, and this flex model will begin in school year '27, '28.
Okay, I want you to have, I know you didn't have a lot of time, so that's why I wanted to give you the extra time, but I do want to be mindful. We're gonna go to the student member, Ms. Adjokai.
Okay. I heard about APs and dual enrollment, and then it just reminded me of a question that, you know, I had. So, one thing that I noticed is that the blueprint state aid has increased by like 9.7 billion, well, 9.7 million for college and career readiness pathways. I wanted to ask, what percent of that money comes to Prince George's County, mainly because two of the things that students like really enjoy taking for like the academic rigor, especially to help us after our high school career, is like APs and dual enrollment classes because it looks competitive on like our college applications. However, while we do appreciate that the county does pay for our, well, has paid for our AP exams this year and also the past year, the money for dual enrollment, I'm not sure if that has been decreased because we now are limited to taking two dual enrollment classes per semester. So, I wanted to know how much of the money for college and career readiness is being allocated to Prince George's County, and also what can be done to increase that number back to being unlimited dual enrollment classes per semester?
Well, when it comes to the funding for CCR, it comes back to CCR met by the 10th grade. That's what we receive funding for. So, if that standard is acquired in 11th or 12th grade, that's wonderful, which, because we want the students to be there by the time they graduate, but we only get funding up until the 10th grade. So, when we went from school year '24, '25 to this school year, previously, the CCR standard was different, particularly for that transitional year, where there was an interim CCR standard. And so, the amount of students that qualified under the interim CCR standard was much lower than it is for school year '25, '26. So, that's why you saw that substantial increase from last school year to this school year. So, the funding that we have in this year's budget is based off of those students who met CCR, based off of the new standard by September 30th, 2024 of last year. So, we kind of get funded from their year before into this year. So, the funding is driven based off of those who meet that standard by the 10th grade for the current school year.
Okay. All right, we're gonna go to Board Member Brown.
Thank you so much. I just, I have two things that I want to say. The first statement is I am a PGCPs parent who has gone through the lottery system, who has appreciated the lottery system even when I, my kids did not get in, and when my kids did get in. I have one that got in for high school, one that didn't get in. I have one who tried twice in the same household that did not get in. And so, when we think about equity, equity doesn't always mean equality. And I also want to say, these are two kids that came from the same household. So, to assume that there is some negative thing that is going on in the systems, and these kids get it over this kid, I'm just gonna say, I don't believe it's simply true. I don't want to continue that narrative. So, if you all can provide that information, that will be great because I have examples in my own household that that is incorrect. So, I just wanted to make sure that I said that. The other thing I want to mention, as a federal employee, I'm thinking about federal funding. Do we have a contingency plan if the federal Title III or other external funding levels change materially?
Yeah, this year fiscal, the school year that we're in right now and planning for 2027, it's filled with uncertainty because we just don't know what could happen. We are really looking at opportunities to be able to, what we do know, to be able to plan for that and to control for that as best as we can. But there's a lot of uncertainty around what could happen around federal legislation, and it's difficult to plan for that level of uncertainty, what that could look like. We're just not certain what direction that could go in. We do know that we went through an exercise earlier this year to be able to determine for those programs that are federally funded, if we needed to make a shift or pivot, what that would look like. And we worked with the academics team to sort of identify those resources and where we might be able to crosswalk some of those programs and interventions that we would like to see continue if the funding went away. So, we are having those sort of high-level conversations around what that would look like, but the magnitude of that potentially, it's such an unknown variable. It's difficult to know the range of what could possibly occur.
And next up is Board Member Gohens McCanns. Oh, you no longer have, okay. All right. All right, well, if there are no more questions, we want to thank you all for joining us for tonight's meeting. To our online viewers, thank you for watching. There being no further business, the time is now 6:31 PM, and the October 9th, 2025 Prince George's County Board of Education Business Work Session Meeting is adjourned. Thank you and good night.